Good evening, everybody. I'll bring this special meeting to order for February the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Result of the agenda for the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting of council be adopted, moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Powell. Discussion, all in favor? I'll call this special hearing to order. The purpose of the hearing is to hear any potential taxpayer who wishes to make representation, ask questions, or register an objection to the local improvement plan for the Centennial Arena Retrofit as local improvement. I request that any person making representation, asking questions, or registering an objection to local improvement plans state his or her name and civic address.
Your worship. We have a resolution to open the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll back that up. Resolve that the council open the public hearing for Local Improvement Plan One, two thousand and twenty-three, for the Swan River Centennial Arena retrofit. Moved by Counselor Midwood, seconded by Counselor Bobic. Discussion, all in favor? Let's carry it. Going back to the points, just some rules. We do allow for a ten-minute presentation. I will allow longer if needed, but please stay, stick to the point. I will also note that this hearing does not mean that the project that we're in question is, this is not approving the project, this is only starting the process of the borrowing. Again, there are some items inside, if you look at the plan, that if it fails in any way, then this bylaw cannot continue as well. Tonight, we do have on video Mr. David Gray, our Director of Recreation, and also CFO Greta. So with that, I will begin to hear anyone that wants to make representation. Again, when you come forward, I would like you to name, state your name and your civic address, which will be recorded. We shall begin.
Am I the only one there? Your worship, are you ready?
Uh, no. Thank you, sorry. Yeah, there's, we do have a good, a good group in the room here tonight, but if you want to begin, you can proceed.
Your worship, thank you. I'll go whenever you deem it appropriate, your worship, at your meeting, and you're entitled to do that.
Okay.
If you want me to go now, though, I can.
Yes, I'll let you begin.
Thank you, your worship. Counselors, Mr. Cool, other members of the administration, and of course, those citizens present. I want to start by thanking you for allowing me to attend virtually. I appreciate the indulgence and apologize for the fact that I couldn't be there in person. I do note that I sent an objection. I trust Mr. Cool, it's been received and that it's accepted.
It has.
And by accepted, I don't mean that you agree with it. Obviously, I mean that it's just filed.
Correct.
I start by saying I have great respect and awe, in fact, for the personal sacrifices that you as counselors and you, Mr. Mayor, make with respect to the time you put into governance of the town of Swan River, the consideration of issues, and the difficulties with that with which that poses. I do not take the filing of the objection nor my presentation lightly. I have stayed clear, as you know, of public debate for, since I left council, expressed because I didn't think it was helpful. In this case, I felt compelled to come forward. I believe the action being proposed is perhaps ill-considered and not fully considered and certainly premature. Of course, we can disagree on that without being disagreeable, and I initially had thought I would ask a series of questions, but I think that would not help the discourse at all. It would only muddy the waters and make it more problematic, and I've decided against that. I assume, Mr. Mayor, that's acceptable.
Thank you, yes.
As I said, I wouldn't feel right, because I feel fairly strongly about this issue, and some of you will remember that I feel strongly that there are processes that we should be going through, and I want to review some of the history of that particular arena. There have been two prior retrofits, the last one in, I think, two thousand and one, when a considerable amount of money was spent, and as we are sometimes want to do, they did it cheaply, and the consequence was that we have a long-term problem. And I suspect, and George Chantiana is quoted, is often quoted as saying, "Those who don't not learn from history are doomed to repeat it." And it seems to me that that's part of what we're doing here. I don't have a suggestion for you. I do think that there needs to be greater thought given to what should be done. I have a couple of ideas of things that might be done depending on certain research, and I don't think that the research you've done is in any way adequate or sufficient to make such a decision. I'm going to jump around a little bit from my plan notes. I will say I've read the material that Mr. Cool sent me this afternoon as much as I could. I was in meetings till five-thirty, so you'll, I apologize that I'm perhaps less prepared and certainly I've never been particularly eloquent, so you may find my presentation disjointed, but I read Mr. Cool's memorandum of July fifth, council. One of the things that jumps out at that is the variety of numbers that are being used in all of the various representations. So in that presentation, the retrofit cost was five thousand dollars and the arena cost was twenty million dollars. I'm not sure where those numbers come from, but they are different than, for instance, the numbers in the survey which followed very shortly. And now, the proposed plan exceeds eight million dollars, and I suspect that that number is conservative. We have a fifty-year-old building, more than fifty years old, actually, and it appears, if you'll think about the Saddle Dome, which was built in nineteen eighty, they're already talking about carrying it down, rebuilding in Calgary, because things expire, and I don't know that we have, and Mr. Paul Coolio, the one exception to my questions, it may be that we've done a detailed analysis of the structural components, and particularly the foundation below. I don't see that in the materials. I don't know that it was done, I know it wasn't previously done. I know that the horizontal drilling and therine has not been done, that was something that was a part of our original plan. Those are major concerns, in my view, that cannot be done, that cannot allow a project to proceed until they're done. Moreover, we have an existing capital plan asked by, by council, I think it was in two thousand and twelve, for development of an area out by the school. That plan, to my knowledge, has never been revoked or repealed, it remains in force, and one of the challenges for this council, and for councils previously, is that if you want to change a plan, there's nothing wrong with changing plans, that's, that's, and nobody but a fool would continue on a course of conduct, knowing that it's now not the best course of conduct. But the process for council should be to revoke decisions and start over. I also, in terms of Appendix D, and I assume you've all got the letter that Mr. Cool sent to me and the appendices that were attached, if not, Mr. Cool, you might want to provide it to them. Appendix D, which was Mr., which included Mr. Cool's memorandum, talked about the fact that this would fit the, and again, I found eventually your strategy plan, as it was called, it's, it's, I don't want to comment on it, that can be helpful, but I will say that if you read the caption at four, which is the caption which in the memorandum says that, that this project is necessary to fulfill that, none of that, of caption four contains anything that would justify this particular activity. Having said that, the reality is that that probably is a deficiency in the strategic and strategy plan, as opposed to a deficiency in this analysis. But there are alternatives that haven't been considered, not the least of which is that we have a community effectively in three municipalities of eight thousand people. We will now have three, if we, we have now three, and we will continue to have three active arenas. How that can be justified as a viable and reasonable alternative escapes me, and more importantly, the reason for constructing it in Swan River would appear to be the same problem that we often complain about in Swan River as to Dog, Conradsen, or Winnipeg, which is a centralization of items. That doesn't mean that we should explore or, or eliminate an arena, it means that that option hasn't even, to my knowledge, been considered. And lastly, nothing in the material suggests that there is any meaningful plan to deal with budgetary problems, cost overruns, and I read with care your comments on how that would be handled, Mr. Cool, or a cost-benefit analysis. I have, however, read the utilization rates, and in two thousand and twenty-two, there were, I think it's a hundred and seven people in, that were the active rates. I can find it if you need it, your worship, just one moment. Which, which one of us? Here it is.
Appendix B.
I apologize, I lied, I said a hundred and seven. It was a hundred and five in minor hockey, forty-seven in figure skating, a total use for that year of a hundred and seventy-eight. It seems to me evident that that is an extraordinary, that spending eight million dollars for a hundred and seventy-eight users is an extraordinary expenditure. And, and it seems to me evident as well that there are other agencies in Swan River, gymnastics club, there's the Friendship Center, there are other agencies that provide, and I'll use the Friendship Center particularly because I know it particularly well, that provide far greater numbers of benefits and far greater participation rates, and yet, town of Swan River has never combined all of it and continues not provide any significant financial support for that utility. I'm mystified why we then think that it's appropriate to spend eight million dollars on what would benefit a relatively few people, and given the cost of hockey, those people who are best able to afford it on their own. We also didn't contribute, to my knowledge, unless I knew correctly, if I'm wrong, to the scale, or nothing substantial in any of that, and yet, that facility is certainly going to have at least the same or greater utilization rates. So, in the end, my view is that this, your action is premature, that your plan needs to have, amongst other things, participation by the other municipalities, that barring that, moving ahead runs the same risk of the same problems that developed with the pool, which are legion, not only the construction difficulties and the resulting lawsuit, which is now mired, we're still mired, I guess is a better way of putting it. And I, you know, I have no, no comment on that, I think it's just the way civil litigation in Manitoba appears to go, it is not particularly helpful. But I fear greatly that once we go down this path, we will end up in a situation where we will find ourselves following exactly the same path. And, as I said, I'm not, you know, we all know I'm not particularly smart, so I don't really understand some of the issues perhaps, but, you know, when I said that the significant problems we face cannot be solved at the same level thinking and created, I think one of the things that he was trying to communicate was that when we are confronted with a problem which has a definitive challenge, which, which makes it difficult, and I particularly remind myself often of possible, our Counselor Morios' comments of wants and needs, I'm sure that all of you already heard that a number of times, he's wanted to say it often. But whether we need an arena, or a new arena, or a retrofitting arena, is something that's debatable. We certainly want it, and nobody would suggest otherwise, and in fact, if you read my material, I have acknowledged that that's clearly something, we need to do something with the arena, whether it's mothballing or whatever, and we certainly have a want, but whether we can afford that, whether we should afford that, whether there are other alternatives, and certainly in your strategic plan, other things seem to be much higher in the prioritism. Now, I might have chosen different priorities, but you should not simply adopt a plan because you think that's what should be popular or need and or wanted, but because it fits into an overall strategy and a thoughtful process for deciding the future of the town, and I suspect or fear that you have failed to do that. I think I'm close to my time, so I won't go on too much more, other than to say that my objection is not to your making a decision, nor to any particular decision, it is that at this time you appear not to have done the necessary work to make an informed decision. And the consequence of that will be borne by all of us for at least twenty years, and I wish, or hope, or entreat that you will give yourself more time, think through the project, contain better research, and consider other alternatives. Your worship, subject to any questions, that is my presentation. I'm perfectly willing to answer questions from the audience, if there are some, or from any of the councils.
Does any member of, sorry, thank you, Mr. Gray. Can I just get your civic address, please?
I thought I said it, and I certainly did in the objection, but it is twenty...
How do you write it down?
It's fine, it's Twenty Parkway Drive, Swan River, Manitoba.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Gray?
I'm just wondering, were you not on council when the decision was made?
No.
You worked on council in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
No.
When were you on council?
When the decision was made to do what, I apologize, Counselor, I should have been so candid, this decision was made, on this project was made in two thousand and twenty-two. I left council in twenty...twenty?
Twenty.
Something like that.
Twenty.
Twenty twenty-one?
But when we put it in a sand base?
We put it in the sand base, yes, I was in council for that, and it was a...
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear on.
Yeah, no, I was, I was on that, and I can speak to that. We chose that for a variety of reasons, most particularly because it's a portable process, that is, it can be redone, and it could be taken out and reused, except for a few of the fixture heads at the beginning. So it was, it was done thoughtfully, in the idea that if we built a new arena, if we moved the facility somewhere else, if we did other things, we had options, and so it was the least expensive option which gave us the best possible alternative. In that particular case, we chose a contractor who had a significant history of doing these projects across Western Canada, I think, and Mr. Cool will know these numbers far better than I will, but I think he'd done something like a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty projects. The only other bid we had was a person who'd never done a project, but thought they could, and gave in with a bid that was lower, but didn't contain most of the extras that we were, that were obvious, and so that was how that was chosen. But it was chosen expressly because it gave us alternatives to make better choice choices. I hope that helps, Counselor.
Yeah, I actually contacted that construction that did that, and I guess at that time, there were some other things we might have been able to do too, but I mean, that's in the past, and we're dealing with those decisions from the past right now and the future, and these are the cards we're dealt with, and we're trying to do it as responsibly as we can. I don't know, have you been at the arena any time lately?
I have been at the arena, not recently, but I have been in the arena.
Yeah, if you're there, you'll see quite a large crack in the ice that's happening, which is obviously a safety concern, so we don't really have the time that you're speaking of, I don't think.
Well, okay, with your greatest respect, I think there are alternatives, including Minnetonahs, but anyway, that's, that's a choice, right?
There is alternatives for Minnetonahs for our minor hockey program, definitely, but Minnetonahs is not suitable for the junior A program that we house. So, albeit we have three arenas in our community, they are not, you're not comparing apples to apples, unfortunately. There's not artificial, there's artificial ice at some, there's not artificial ice at some, there's other issues, I believe, I'm not speaking to which one, but I know there could be mold issues at one, maybe even two, maybe even three.
I don't think that's Minnetonahs, but my understanding is it's a perfectly acceptable facility, except that the MGHL has asked that not be done. But candidly, the choice of whether or not to retain a minor hockey team, or a minor, a junior hockey team, I'm not sure how you justify any million-dollar expenditure for that, but that's, that's a choice for you.
Okay.
I think it's an ill-considered choice.
Any further questions? Counselor Powell.
Just to make a statement that I do believe that the town of Swan River did put funding into Thunder Hill in the first expansion, it was G seven, that actually put point three of a million for three years, I believe our contribution would be around sixty thousand dollars for the first part of Thunder Hill.
And I just want to make sure that we keep on this topic here, but you are right, but let's keep on to this topic here, so. Anything further? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray, and your, your objection has been received as well.
Thank you. With that, I'll take my leave, your worship, thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, if you like.
I'm wondering if I can go next, because I might not last through the whole thing with my head.
Of course, yes.
That's all right.
I'll maybe stand here so that people can hear there.
You can sit if you'd like, more.
Yeah, of course. Before I start, I want people to know I'm very, very hockey, I slept with hockey pucks when my grandson was little, and he played hockey, and his, almost his, three-quarters of his brain is hockey. He now refs as an adult, so.
If you could state your name, Maggie.
I will, Margaret Romack, thirteen sixteen, First Street North. So just so that I remember from teaching days, that we tend to remember very little of what we hear, so I've brought you a copy for later, you can keep. Thank you for the work you've done so far, I'm glad to see that you're consulting the public for our opinions. What is the best thing for the whole Swan River Valley? There are three categories of so-called stakeholders, as I see it. Number one is taxpayers, number two is all four municipalities, and number three is sports teams and individuals who use the facility, and I believe that's the correct order to look at the three stakeholder groups. The decision should not be based on what is best for the stampeters, other teams, or for any individuals. It must be based on what's best for all four municipalities, and indeed, it should be based on what's best for the taxpayers most especially. There needs to be input from the other municipalities, and I would suggest not just the four chairs or wreaths, but the municipality councils. Because I think it's well past time that we got over the idea that we are four municipalities, we're one, I don't care how it's divided up or how it's labeled, we are one, and we have to look at it that way. So I'm, I'm very not knowledgeable about the things that you've written, but I've got some questions here. Should Swan River be making a decision in isolation from the other municipalities? We are told Minnetonahs Arena needs rentals, what are the costs of those rentals? Can Swan River and Minnetonahs share data about each of their renovations and come up with a solution that is best for all? Can a staggered renovation take place with both communities planning out the details together? Can some of the Swan River rentals be deferred, done over a few years, or some dropped altogether? Why are we just hearing about this one choice when we had three presented to us before? It is seventeen kilometers or thirteen minutes between the two facilities in Minnetonahs and Swan River. You have a duty to be cooperating with other municipalities to make the most responsible decision possible. The taxpayers cannot bear the weight of a decision that is not frugal and well-thought-out. And if you have questions, I would take them.
Okay, I'll just start firstly by, you're asking us if we had any discussion with the other four, or the other three municipalities. We always have ongoing discussions with our municipal neighbors and invite them for any time, as you may have heard in the past, with shared services and so forth, and that's always on a continual basis.
But specifically about the arenas?
We have, we've sat with them, and we will present to them our findings once tenders come in and give them the option.
But that's already when you've got plans for standalone, your own, see, I believe there's enough between you and Minnetonahs that some, some planning together would go a long ways.
We are trying to do that, trust me, this kind of plan has been trying to do that for several years now. We, does the town of Swan River have any decision or any input into other arenas? Right now, no. Using, separate municipalities are...
Yeah, that's...
Control theirs, and it would be a great thing if, if we could, there's always, there was often one talk about a district, and we would put recreation under one umbrella, but that has still not come to fruition. Can we drop items off on the rental? As this process will continue on, that may have to be the case, where we'll look at the tender documents look like and what the prices will be, and if this, the price of the rental, or council chooses that they don't want to proceed with this, then that will be the decision at the time. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Hey. Thank you. I can get a copy of that? As long as I do. These are wonderful things.
Nobody else?
I'd like to speak to the market, ready, in the notes.
Okay, so Mr. McKay will go after the next person who chooses to speak. I guess you're ready, Mr. McKay? Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to make my representation. I, my first thought was I wouldn't get involved, because I had been involved in this for thirty years.
Well, maybe you can sit here and speak up a little bit more, because there's some people in the back that cannot hear you.
I have a hard time hearing you, by the way.
Sorry, I'll try to speak louder, tell me if you can't hear me.
Yeah, we can't hear you either.
But you know what, there is chairs in the front here, too.
Oh, you can talk louder. Yeah. Anyway, Lawrence Hart, four four two lab, or Andre Bay. I swore I would never get involved with this again, because I was involved for thirty years, ten years, the last ten years in Swan River, but I made a presentation in fourteen, I believe it was, with the Wellness Center, is that when it was? And I felt that the advice that I gave in council was good advice, that it was going to be very costly to operate a pool that had very few people going to it. We're not in a location where there is no water, there's water all the way around us, so the advice that I gave was not received well, council went ahead. A number of things that just brings to the forefront again, and I read from the paper, because I say I hadn't thought, I wasn't planning on coming, I said that this afternoon. Your anticipated cost is seven point five million dollars, which is fine, I don't know where you come up with that, and I don't, never researched it, and I'm not going to question that, but what I'm going to question is the revenues that you're proposing to receive, what happens if those revenues don't come in? For example, the arts and council, three point seven five million, if you don't get that money, what happens? Do you proceed? Your tender document for the pool is a similar going to be with this facility, seven point five, and it comes in at ten or twelve million, similar to what the Wellness Center did, it was way over budget, there were addendums and addendums, and it came out what it is. My concern is that, yes, the rink is nice, I agree with the comments that were made by Mr. Big and this lady, we should work together, I know that's very difficult, because I tried that for ten years with the municipalities. We should work together. I know that's very difficult because I tried that for ten years with the municipalities and didn't get too far. But I think this council has to realize that, as Mr. Morio has said at one meeting that I listened to once and needs it, it was brought up plenty of times. You're looking at a fire truck, or had been looking at it, I still don't know if that's in the case, but that's about a million dollars. You have a landfill site that at some point in time is going to have to be relocated. You have a sewage lagoon that is at capacity, overcapacity, has been a cost to you a fortune. At least it was looking like a fortune, and I researched all that back in two thousand and seven or eight, whatever it was. So you've got many, many needs coming in front of you, not wants, needs. And I think council has to look at this and determine what is a need and what is a want. And if it is a want, how best can we be able to afford that without putting undue financial stress on the community? Our community isn't growing, people. When you look at it, I don't think, our population hasn't grown in fifteen years, really. I think council has to look at this and choose a route that is going to work. I also think this community fundraising campaign, I'm not sure what that is, that's asking the community to fundraise again?
There's a group that is fundraising, yes.
Fund什么呢?
There is a group that's been organized to fundraise.
I hope it's in a better organization than does a little more than the last group. For the Wellness Center, as you're well aware, that they did not raise anywhere near a million dollars. I also think that the stampeters need to put more of an effort into helping fund this. I know they have difficult times, and I'm looking at you guys, don't beat me up, please, because I'm seeing you guys here. But the reason for this problem in our arena stems right back to the stampeters from putting the ice in too early and leaving it in for eight months of the year. That problem may not have been risen in the future because we had not started developing, putting ice in August one, basically, when the date starts. So they should share some of the responsibility. I know they have a lot of fundraising to operate their own team, which is getting harder and harder, I suspect, every year. But there has to be a joint effort with everybody. If you're going to build this, let's get everybody involved with this. Because if you don't get the fundraising done, it'll be so different in the Wellness Center. Once council signs the dotted line, I bring a bit, your fundraising ceases, basically. So with all that, I'm not opposed to this, don't get me wrong, but I think this council needs to put a lot of thought into this and get a lot more involvement to be able to afford this. Our costs, I'm not going to go into what our costs are today as compared to what they were a couple of years ago with inflation and all that. But that's not to say that inflation can be here for a long time, and that is a lot of people out there that are hurting. And I know there are some that are at a difficult time now surviving. You keep tacking on two or three hundred dollars, and that's just for recreation, plus your other expenses that are going to increase. Everything increases, your fuel and everything else. And then you don't know what the school division is going to do yet, if they're going to do any raising. So you guys have to take all this into consideration. Your five-year capital plan, and I know I could never get council to think seriously on a five-year capital plan, and I questioned them on a ten-year capital plan. There was just no involvement, and I think that is totally wrong. I think that the municipal officials, you have to look at what you want this community to be in the future, and that means a lot of different things, and a lot of it is financial support. Please take note, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any member of council with a question?
I didn't want to follow David.
He did a good job. He did a good job, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McKay, are we ready? Andy?
Could I just ask a question of Lawrence Hart, please?
Sorry?
Can I ask a question of Lawrence Hart before he leaves here tonight?
I think I couldn't allow that.
Lawrence, I didn't disagree with anything that you had to say there, they were all very good points, but I would like to correct on one thing for the original Wren Wellness project that we had, and that was that it was fully funded. We had seven, this is all a long time ago, but we had seven point two million commitment from the federal government and the provincial government and the Townes-Swan River. Roseanne Ojek, who was Minister of Finance at the time, got us another million, which makes eight point two. If we got the other two municipalities in, and she was already aware this has to be a value project. So that would have made eight point two million for a nine point four project. Plus, we had corporate donations, including a third of a million from Richardson's, from Art Richardson, a hundred thousand from the credit union, and so on. Plus, we had that two seven forty club, which we never really got going on, got started, because we were so busy finding revenue actions. But we would have potentially had a ten percent overrun in reserve. So I would say that the original Wren Wellness project, in its entirety, with the field house with the walking track on that over seventy acre site, was financially very high of capital cost.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, but we do want to continue on with this theme here tonight. Mr. McKay.
Do you want me to go up there or about here?
No, if you could come up here.
You couldn't hear Lawrence hardly.
Really?
Your voice looks a bit off. I can, it'll take me a couple minutes there.
Okay, we'll take a recess and then we'll shut that fan off.
You guys don't have a mic system?
No, we don't.
Because I was here at a meeting before COVID, and it was the same thing, the audience couldn't hear. Need to consider that.
We will. Thank you. Lawrence, just a comment. I was actually going to say it, and I completely forgot, but when you asked about the revenues in the document that you had read, that if we didn't receive any of those funds, you know, that are listed in there, if any of those fail, then the borrowing cannot proceed. Thanks. Okay, you have the floor, Mr. McKay.
Did you want to come up here, stand on the back?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, I'll stand right here. Good evening. I'm Darren McKay. I'll give you an address, fifteen hundred Third Street North, Swan River. The present arena was constructed approximately fifty-five years ago, and it served the Swan River and the Swan Valley well. The Swan River and the Swan Valley, sorry, I made no choice sitting there, but in my opinion, it's basically a big shop. And similar to the Swan Valley Co-op with their food store, prior to building their present location, they added on and renovated that building many times, and before you know it, it was structurally unsafe and needed replaced. I have completed and been involved in quite a number of construction projects and developments, and I have found in many cases, they run considerably over budget. And it would be a shame to proceed with a proposed seven million or so project, and it turns into a ten million dollar project. Possibly the cost of a brand-new arena, similar to what we have. In my opinion, we don't need an MTS center in Winnipeg. We don't need a Portage or a Dolphin Arena. But when the time is right, the Swan Valley or Swan River should build arenas similar to what we have. You know, the Swan Valley, the Swan Valley should build it together and use it forever. So I am opposed to the borrowing bylaw and I object to the Townes-Swan River proceeding with this rental project. And I think you should reconsider and possibly do some very minimal repairs to it, and when the time's right, build a new one. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any member of council want to comment or ask a question? Okay, being none. Anyone further?
I just have to add this. Have you actually, sorry, Colin Walton, I was just wondering. I was just wondering, have you actually looked into the cost of a new arena?
You mean like as far as-
Has Bill have a new one instead of a regular one?
We have, we've had, I guess, how old would you say, Derek, the-
Like very preliminary estimates done in spring of twenty twenty-two. So yes, and we've contacted multiple other municipalities who have recently built arenas, not private, public arenas.
Did you have a number that you can give out or?
Just quickly here. So very recently, Kotai First Nation, fifteen million dollars. Verdant, eighteen million dollars, which wasn't just an arena. Mendoza, seven point two million. Rivers, six point five million. Isina Boya, eighteen million. There's one, a brand-new one in PEI, ten million. Win Yard, twelve million. Loret Tache, eighteen million.
So of those numbers that you looked up, which one of those numbers would be a comparable building to the one that's in the project?
From what we see, the six and the seven are not. They don't give us what we have. Between the twelve and the eighteen, yes.
Mr. Gray?
Just a question.
I just have, Mr. Gray was on first, so I'm going to let him go.
I concur, but thank you, Your Worship. I apologize for interrupting and for coming back like a bad dream or something. But one of the things in a question, answer to a question, you said that if any of the monies that weren't received, and I actually, I think there was reference to that in one of Mr. Poole's materials, when I'd forgotten it until you mentioned it. If any of the monies that are being proposed aren't granted, then the project wouldn't proceed. Did I understand that correctly?
Well, I guess I should say that the borrowing will not proceed.
That's correct.
But we need the borrowing to proceed in order to even for the project to proceed.
Right, right. So if the project isn't going to proceed if any of those several grant applications don't come in, or we don't raise enough private money or fundraising money, what's the plan then? And how is it different than the suggestion that we take our time and do it right?
That, I guess, what council is dealing with right now is the risk of perhaps not having a surface to play on. And that's where we are right now.
It's my fault. I apologize. I didn't ask the question clearly, and I- If we're not going to proceed with the project, if one of those don't go through, surely you have a contingency plan, or is a contingency plan then just polar breath and oak?
No. If the project is far too much more money or any of those things, we're going to have to review it, and we may have to downsize what the scope of the project might be. Maybe it's just the floor, because that's the key issue right now, is the floor. So we may have to downsize the project to just simply just the floor.
Okay, that's an answer. Thank you. I apologize.
Mr. Hart?
Sorry, Your Worship, but I had a question. I didn't write it down. I don't know how much of this group sitting here understands municipal finances. The municipality is only about the moral of the game. I don't know where you guys are at, or how much space you have left to reach your maximum. Now, that could come into play as well with this, depending on what turns out in this. Also, council has to, as I mentioned earlier, have to keep in the back of their mind other projects that are a need, that are going to have to take place. But your borrowing limits aren't with us, and I remember it used to be a formula, and I can't remember the formula, like, based on a set value, so. And then depending on how much right now, if the town is in hot, or so, there is not too many options when it comes to huge dollar loans.
Did you want to fulfill or talk about the obligations and what we can borrow? So everybody understands that building something brand-new, and if it's going to be like a fifteen million dollar price tag, as an example, I'll say it would, then we don't have the borrowing capacity, or would put us into a really tough situation that Mr. Hart is saying.
That's correct. Municipalities can borrow to twenty percent of their assessed assessment. So it's, we are at, I think it's sixteen million dollars is our max that we can borrow. Right now, we're sitting approximately just under nine.
Go ahead.
So anybody doing a project, like Darren had mentioned-
Can you just state your name and your address?
Eric Boitsch, eleven thirty Drive. Anyone doing a project, not knowing what's under the ground, I mean, I don't think this, I don't think anyone's going to guess what's underneath there. And I think we could make a serious effort and think that, once you open that ground up, you're going to find something that you're not going to want to see. And what happens if we start digging, and you've only got a cap, and you run out of money? The second question I got is-
Well, let's answer maybe the first one, because that is something that we're all thinking about up here, too.
Yeah, we couldn't do a geotechnical analysis on the current rink because it would involve destroying the temporary floor. So when the first day the ice comes out, we will be planning on getting, that's the first thing that needs to be done. It's going to tell us a lot of information. Fortunately, we couldn't do it in the springtime or at Christmas when we needed it. But yeah, we don't have it, and it needs to be done. It is the first thing to be done.
Second question I got is, just recently, there's other communities that are a lot smaller than us have built some pretty beautiful facilities. And I guess the question I have is, we're a lot bigger, we're a bigger town than some of these facilities, other towns. I think that's the last one here that just built up, they just built up, they just opened up a-
They've revealed it again?
Yeah, they just opened up a big rink. I think it costs like eighteen million dollars? Or somewhere, somewhere. So the question I got is like, how do you plummet some of that money? Like, that's, don't tell me that they never fundraised, they never fundraised that much money there. I heard, what I've heard is that most of that money was government money.
Yeah, I know it. Eleven point five million from federal and provincial for that building, and they put in seven.
So have we been in contact with them to find out how they proceeded and got the funding, that funding? Like, I hate putting old, new money onto an old building when eventually we're going to, we're going to regret it.
Do you have a direct question, then?
Only, Chris, the question is, has council gone up and found and talked to these other communities and asked them, how did they get their funding?
Some of them, I think that might have been able to get some of that old grant money that, some of it has been frozen, right?
You may, Your Worship.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have reached out to other communities. The one that you're speaking of, like of the Niberville, that funder that came under the ISIP federal grant, which has been frozen because the intake list is so long, that they probably applied for that, I would say, five-plus years ago. And they're just getting it there. And the intake on that grant has been frozen for the last two years by the province. So we've been trying to wiggle our way into getting that, and we're in the queue, but it's a long process, so. So what we've been doing is like, as it states in the advertisement, there's the fifty percent, the three and a half million dollar one, that's a new grant that the province has that we're lobbying hard to get at. But yeah, we have reached out to other communities as to where they're getting their sourcing, and a lot of it is, it was coming from those like ISIP grants and stuff like that, where based on your project and where it goes in the queue and- based on your project and where it goes in the queue and how it rates and.
So, yes, the question, the question I got is, so if, if we announced that we are going to do a new build, would that open up additional resources for funding? I mean, there's, 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 there's two ways of thinking there. You're putting, when, when I'm assuming when, when government's looking at putting new money into an old building, you're taking a risk. But putting building, a new building, is there, is there a different, different criteria for, for, uh, for funding when you're doing a new build?
Yeah, with, with the federal one, there is a, a bigger grant that, but, uh, then again, it goes to the max of fifty percent. So if you go to like, let's say an eighteen million dollar, then our commitment becomes nine million dollars.
But, but you, but you're just telling me that, that you just said that, that to renovate this is going to be seven million, right? Seven plus?
If, if everything goes right.
If everything goes right.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Borden, and then I see Mr. Gray wants to speak again as well. Go ahead.
Uh, Kelvin Borden, ninety dollars. Yeah, I'm a big believer in, uh, not throwing, you know, good things after bad. I just think that an investment needs to be made, but I also do think that we need to do a little bit more research in regards to how we go about it. I do believe there is, you know, it opens up, what Mr. Boitschak said, uh, while it's open up a little bit more when, when it's going towards something that's new as opposed to, to a patch job. And when you guys did that temporary ice service the last go around, what did the contractor tell you as far as the life expectancy of it? Did he, did he have a timeline on?
I believe it was three to five years as well.
Yeah, they wouldn't guarantee it at all, but, uh, they did expect it to last between three and five years.
And what did they say would be the first thing that would fail on it?
Pardon me?
What'd they say would be the first thing that would fail on it?
They wouldn't touch that with a ten foot pole.
How, how, where are we on, where, where are we, we're in year six or seven of that, aren't we?
Uh, I believe we're entering year four.
Mr. Gray?
Worship, um, I, I just appoint more of information. I assume council has turned your attention to the fact that after June seventh of this year, there, the, the provincial government won't be able to commit funds until after October the fourth.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all, we all understood that that was, uh, one of the timelines.
Yeah. Anything further? Mr. McKay?
I would like to know, if possible, what would be the replacement cost of our exact centennial arena? Once again, a fairly basic building, built back in nineteen sixty-seven, with wooden bleachers, few dressing rooms added onto the side, a waiting room added onto the side. Surely you folks got a price of, uh, replacement of our existing one? What was it?
In the spring of twenty twenty-two, we did go to a engineering firm and ask for, we couldn't get class D because we didn't have the money to pay for it at the time, but we did ask them ballpark with what we have listed, our services that we provide, the lobby, change rooms, we want to probably add a accessible change room, all of it. But, uh, we did not state the parameters that those stands would be made of wood or anything like that. We did state new building with those amenities. Of course, their, their question for the longest time was, what are you going to build? It all depends. You can fill it full of gold and it'll be worth two hundred million dollars. So he said twelve point five to eighteen million, which really meant twelve point five to two hundred million dollars if you want. Depends what you build.
Maybe Director Spilchuk might have one who would say it is true.
Well, once again, I'd be ashamed to spend if our arena costs what we have, if it happened to cost seven or eight million dollars, we'd have to run into a project and spend ten fixing up a fifty-five year old building. That would be, it's just not progress. Yeah.
Mr. Boitschak?
Isn't there a way to, to build it in phases, undo ring in phases? And, and we, 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 we do the, the bare requirements? I mean, I, I, I mean, I used to travel, I've traveled most of the hockey team, they're pet in the past and no rings like, uh, Wavies of Capitals ring. It's, it's not a, it's not a fancy ring. It's nothing any, any fancy. I mean, I, I said some, some said, we don't need a, we don't need a dolphin, we need a credit, we don't need a credit union center. But, but is there a possibility of looking at that and, and, and building basically starting at phases and we, and we do phase one? I just hate the fact of, of honesty of, of spending money, that much money on our old building. If we want to see progress in the community, we have to go get it.
All those will be considered, I'm sure. Uh, Mr. Borden?
Yeah, and, and furthermore, like the fact that, you know, our numbers are low for minor hockey and our attendance is low, or if maybe so for their junior team, well, throwing a new roof on the joint isn't going to attract any more attention to people to come into a new facility to watch a junior game or a minor hockey game and think, you know what? What a beautiful place to come, what a meeting place, and they will stay, they will come back. But our pack, the patch job on the rink, it's just, it's, I think we limp it out. My opinion is we limp it out and we start opening avenues for new and we fundraise until we can do it. When you have money, you know, you, it's easier to get money. And, and that's the path we need to go on. And if it's a crack we got to worry about, then we got a guy out there maintaining that crack every day, every day, discussing stuff with, you know, phone consultants on rigs and stuff like that. Maybe it's too damp for them all the time. Maybe their ice is shrinking. You know, it's, there's, there's. I just think we need to do more research and Derek hit it right on the head. As a guy who sits behind the desk and takes home calls from contractors who want to come in and dig up the surface that we have. And you can tell by the tone of their voice that they're unsure of what they're getting themselves into. And when you're making recommendations and the addendums are coming out based on your recommendations, then you know the research isn't done yet. And it's just kind of going to be, you know, a shot in the dark.
Mr. Boitschak?
I say we put this to sleep, we patch it as much as we can, we put a, we put a, we put a group together of stakeholders that have some experience. No disrespect to, to everybody on, but we have a lot of people with a lot of construction experience and project experience. We put a, a, a team together to go out and find the best what we can, what we got to work with. And then we work as a team and then we build and we proceed. Maybe we don't build it right away, maybe we build it five years from now. But we need to start acting now and the fact is that we're just going to patch what we have. My understanding is, is that if there was an issue with the ice surface that we have now, that there is someone that could come and complete or fix, if there was a pipe leak or anything like that, my understanding is, is that correct?
Yeah, if there's, if the temporary floor breaks down, absolutely.
Okay, so, so there is contingency if something is to happen with, with what's out there right now?
Well, that, that's the, that's the system. So if the system breaks down and can't be repaired, if the ice faults due to the floor underneath moving, it just moves that system. We can, we don't know why the floor is moving for sure. So that's, you know, we have, we've been in contact with, you know, we, we've contacted engineers and the engineering companies, we've contacted the, the contractors who build these things for the hands-on approach and then private companies we've sat with that own thirty-two of these in southern Manitoba and and they, none of them will touch the light, like they won't tell us, this is your problem. Do this and you're good for five years. Nobody's going to do that. We don't know why that floor is moving. We do need a geotechnical analysis, really bad.
The system meaning you're talking just the sand and the pipe?
On top of the concrete floor.
On top of the styro and concrete floor. And then the rest we're dealing with ice, right?
That's right.
Anything further?
My last question. So I'm here formally objecting to his proceeding borrowing. What's the next step and who? I know some other people spoke, but I'm one that definitely, I object. Does anyone else object here till you, for you guys proceeding? Do you object or not? Mark?
Well, I think a lot more, uh, homework has to go into it. I don't have the knowledge you guys do about ice and that, but I go back to saying.
Yeah.
We're a valley.
Yeah.
And, and really, if we're going to put up a big, new ring, this should involve the other municipalities, in which case you've got a far bigger fundraising to draw on.
Hundred percent.
So that's why I think they need to sit down and talk nipples and dimes with the other arenas about how much rentals they want put into their rings.
So what's the?
If, uh, Rivers, we can.
So the next step, so the, like I said in my opening statement, um, this is to start the process of the borrowing, which again, may not even happen due to any of the, the items that are inside the, the bylaw and may fail. If, uh, we move forward with that, it has to go to the municipal board, your objections will be reviewed as well. And, uh, and then they'll make the decision whether or not we can proceed to the next, uh, readings. But at the same time, if the tenders that are out right now, if we receive them and they're over the price of this, uh, borrowing, then we can't really proceed with it. So council will have to make a decision whether or not they're going to change the scope of the project or they're going to change their minds and, and look at some other options that you have presented tonight. So this is not in any way a slam dunk as far as doing the retrofit. There's a lot of other things that have to be, uh, play out. And we are reviewing and, and, and listening to other, uh, options. I'll be honest with you, right now that I can't share with you. But there are other options that we are looking at right now as well. Go ahead.
I'll go on record objecting to those fans.
Okay. So anything further? Go ahead.
Uh, Danielle Gordon, room four sixty-one, eleven thousand eight hundred. Um, just a question. So what is, what can be done to give more time? It sounds like everybody wants more time, which, I mean, honestly, it's kind of disappointing as a community because we've known about this for five years, that this was, we were going to have to replace this. So it's, it's a little bit disappointing as a, a community as a whole. We're just kind of coming together on this issue. Um, but, so, but that's where we are and we can't change the past. So at this point, what can be done? It sounded like Mr. Gray was talking about the option with the floor as it is now, that that decision was made because there was maybe an option to give it more life? Did I misunderstand that? Like, is there something? Cause I understand as it is right now, we have a current issue, there's always risk by putting an ice again next year with it as it is, that we will not have a full season. So is there something that can be done with the current arena to give us just a little bit more life without throwing millions of dollars into it till a decision is made?
We have asked that question for years now. The, what we're getting with the kicker, I guess the, with the answer that ensures us use, that's key, is that it ensures us use is, is there's this renovation. Fix your floor, it's moving, we don't know why, you've got to fix your floor. If you don't deal with the humidity, the humidity, why fix your floor? If you're not going to deal with your roof, why do we do it? It's like every renovation. We, we, we completely see what are we going to, what are we going to find when we pull this thing out? We, we can only fix what we can see right now. We, we won't, we don't know what's going to fall apart in ten years when we say this thing is going to last fifteen years, but the, the, the decisions that have been made over the past two years, and I, I guess I'm, I can't speak for council, but, uh, it is risk versus time. That's why we're here. And, and they are exploring options. The, this, like, like, uh, Mayor Jacobson said, this is just, uh, municipal process to allow us to borrow. In the case that we do this, there's, there's risks involved, like with, with user groups in, in the arena that, that council, again, I can't speak for them, but in the past has not been willing to be responsible for. So doing nothing was not an option. So they're going to do something. So we reviewed the new building, we looked at our financials, we gave them as much information as we could. And it decided that that was not the way they were going to do it. So it's going to be a retrofit. So we, we started the process on what's the absolute minimum that we can do to get this thing, ensure that we can play hockey on it. Because we can, we've talked, you know, just if I can, I'll go into some of the options that we've talked about, but for example, is putting in horizontal geothermal loops underneath that building and getting that frost out. If that's the reason it's moving, that should solve it. We have our sand floor, we're good for as long as our building stands. If it's not the reason, we're going to lose the ice. No engineer is going to tell us the reason why that floor is moving until we have a geotechnical analysis or we rip it up and see what's under there.
Cause the reality is, if we say, hey, let's all get together and try to build a new arena, that's like five plus years out, right? So we need something in the meantime.
I, I think some of the key decisions that were made, again, this is, stop me if I'm going too far.
No, they're, they're okay.
But, uh, was the, the decision was that we were not going to pass a resolution that would kill the junior team. We were not going to do nothing. They weren't going to let the ring fail and just say we've done nothing. And we did explore new and we had no partners at the time, which is a major decision. We had no fundraising at the time and it all contributed to the decision of not building new.
Thank you. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to, very wolf, I live in, I live at the rink, so that's my. But I just wanted to shed some light on the user groups, like, I mean, you know, what he said is totally incorrect, like that, that ring can use from, at times, seven to midnight, you know, right through. So, you know, there's, uh, right now Dallas has that school program going, which starts at eight thirty and then there's Mom and Tots, there's noon hour hockey, there's our practice and there's canski, uh, minor hockey, rec league, you know, so there's a lot of people using that facility and, you know, what originally was said, so it's just, uh, I mean, it's not just the stampede we're worried about, it's the community. You know, this community is so strong and, you know, they're saying, you know, we have two local kids playing pro hockey. You know, one in the Western League and, and how many kids in college, you know, that just come out of this five thousand people community, it's just, be ashamed to have that ring shut down. You know, or not take the proper steps. And I just think that, you know, for this group here, like, nobody knows what's going on. I think that's the biggest problem. You know, we, these guys talk about their knowledge and what they have to offer and, I mean, I've been in a rink all my life, so I mean, I've been involved in building rinks. I've been involved with, uh, uh, planning the rink that didn't get built, you know, renovations. Uh, one of our current players, uh, his dad was involved in renovating, uh, a rink in Vernon, so he sent me all that info and then how small the world is, and I all of a sudden I got, I got info from the Roslin Rink, uh, Swamish Rink, uh, North Bay Rink. Um, you know, financial impact that the town, like when the tournaments come here, I mean, you know, if a team has fifteen kids, there's probably at least two for that kid, whether it's two parents or a sister and how much, uh, you know, money that's bringing to the, the community with hotels, restaurants, you know, they're buying takes at the sports shop, whatever it may be, like, like there's a.
That's all gone if there's no ring.
Yeah, there, there's a ton of impact, you know, and I just wanted to make sure that we, everybody understands all that. You know, and then, you know, let's, yeah, like, I've never seen a community so strong with helping when, when it's needed. And I just think if we had a committee, put something together, darn nice stampede years could help, you know, fundraise. And I'm sure that minor hockey would, figure skating would. You know, the schools, I don't know how much they can get involved, but, I mean, they use three, four hours a day right now coming to skate during school time, so. You know, I just think we're here to help, like, let's, let's figure it out.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think anybody up here thinks that we don't need a rink, so, uh, I've never heard that one time from any member of council that's here. Uh, I'll just repeat again what I said earlier and that is that this, this, uh, process that we're going through tonight is just to start the process as far as borrowing goes. It does not guarantee that we are doing a retrofit. Council will look at the tender documents, hear from the community as this time moves forward and, uh, if at that time when we read the documents and they, it's going to be too much or they hear differently and we need to take a different turn on this, then council will make that decision. So, uh, up to you to, uh, speak to your counselors and, uh, and make your, uh, everything known. Go ahead.
Can I ask a clarification as a non-town resident? I live just outside Lemons, is that allowed?
Typically it's not, but I, I'll let it.
Two twenty-three Third Avenue Northwest, technically Swan River, but in the R M.
Still at R M.
So, uh, clarification, just on what you said with the borrowing bylaw, this starts the process, that's what you're looking to do. This starts the process, that's what you're looking to do. Um, but what happens if the decision is made to not proceed with the retrofit? Do you have to start that process over again to increase that limit?
Possibly, yes. We can't change, once this, if this passes or approved by the municipal board and it ends up going and passes by a third reading, cause there's three readings it has to have. And if by any chance, uh, if it's more, uh, then we cannot proceed with this, uh, bylaw. So there's a lot of things that have to come into play to make this work.
And tie this considered first reading?
Yes, it would.
And it has to pass three readings before being?
So first reading, a lot makes it, it goes to the municipal board, which would have to approve it. So that's, and if they don't approve it, then we start all over with, with the borrowing processes.
I think you should advise them about objecting?
What's that?
To the borrowing bylaw?
Uh, objections, go, uh.
Yeah, the, the public is, uh, allowed to object to any, any borrowing bylaw we have. Uh, we have to record all the objections tonight and give that to the municipal board. The municipal board will put out an ad here and they decide whether a hearing is, is, is going to be had or not. You can also object to the municipal board directly. Uh, and that, that's it. If there's, I believe if it's three quarters of the voting public, uh, do object, the borrowing bylaw is finished. Uh, I think twenty-five objections to the municipal board, uh, triggers a public hearing, municipal board hearing. I, I'm gonna have to check that number, but.
Who was next? Oh, okay, uh, you're up at the front.
Todd Morden, three forty-nine Ninth Avenue South. Um, I just wanna clarify, maybe this was, uh, maybe Derek, you made this point before, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear in my mind. If you borrow to the extent that you're planning to here, does that pretty much put the Townes Swan River at the ceiling as far as your borrowing capacity?
No, if we have the capacity of approximately sixteen million and we're at eight point nine, we create around that twelve, so we have four left. But we do have, you know, as, as Mr. Gray spoke to, we have mandatory projects that are coming down the line and they are expensive. So it's the, that's the, that's the discussion that has been had this entire time. We, council's very aware of the financial position of the town and they realize the need and the want of the rate payers of this project and it's contentious.
Jeremy.
Uh, Jeremy Bergen, also an RM resident, but I'm gonna flex my journalistic interest here. Um, if I understand correctly from a conversation I had with the Director of Recreation, uh, recently, the, this borrowing process is, is, is happening in kind of an unorthodox, uh, order, right? Because usually you would have your, your tenders in first and then go forward with your, your borrowing bylaw a little bit?
Not necessarily, but you would probably like to have that. But, uh, there's a lot of times municipalities will pass borrowing prior to tendering RFPs.
Yeah, actually the other way. We would have our borrowing in place prior to going to tender.
Okay, anything further?
No.
I'm sorry, timelines. I recently hired someone to do a geotech report and my goodness, it took quite a while. So if the ice goes out, we get this geotech report done and my goodness, will the ice have to go in in a few months or something? What's your timelines on this renovation project?
At the, the start of the project, it will be technically the day the ice goes out, but we're, we're thinking the start of May and, uh, we are aiming for a end of November completion.
Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess, I mean, I understand that this is a hearing concerning the money and, and, um, but a lot of, and why I haven't spoken about, um, you know, impact to stampede years and why we chose to send a letter to you guys instead. Um, but I guess a lot of people are probably speaking on the project because they're not, this has been our first opportunity, um, in this kind of setting to do so. So after, even if your borrowing goes through, will there be another opportunity for the public to weigh in on the decision, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yeah.
And that's why a lot, I think a lot of us are stepping outside of what this hearing is intended to.
We, we, we will wanna do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And like, at, at first, that, like, when it, if it goes to a second and third reading, that's at open meetings and you can register to be a delegation at any of those meetings to speak, so.
Anything further?
When do you expect to make your decision?
We have to wait for the tender documents, which we won't hear back. I think about maybe a week and a half to two weeks.
About a week and a half, right?
So within two weeks then?
In that timeline, but the thing is we also have to wait for the municipal board as well.
Yeah, there's several things that are out of town's control.
Yeah, but like, is it something that would be determined by the end of March?
I can't say that because we're speaking on, uh, the municipal board and we don't know how quickly they'll move on this.
Yeah, like, I'm just wondering, like.
It may, it, it may not. Be quite honest with you, it may not.
If there isn't a solid decision by the end of March, really, how can you proceed?
Can't.
Is there, there's no drop date date where it says, if you don't get this, the, from by this mistake, we're gonna have to hold off a year?
Yeah, there definitely is, yes.
That's the whole reason why we're doing this first, potentially this first reason to get that clock started with the municipal board, cause that can be anywhere from two weeks to four months when it goes down their queue. And if we don't have that approval, we can't do second or third. So they, that, a factor that's totally out of our control that may just destroy this entire anticipated destruction period this summer and force it down the road.
In addition to the approval of the ACS secret.
There's a lot of what ifs.
What ifs, which realistically it's hard to see.
Is there anything further?
I just was wondering if the, if the, if the borrowing does go through, everything, like the numbers all come through, the funding all comes through. Um, are you, are you going, like, is the plan to still go ahead with it? If say there's objection to maybe not spending, doing all of the renovations that you want to do? Like maybe just, just fixing the ice and not doing the extras? Or is it, if you get the, if all the funding and borrowing goes through, it's?
That, that'll be solely up to council and, uh, if council decides that they wanna vote that, uh, down and, and, and not approve it, then it won't proceed. If they wanna change it to a, a different scope, if we're talking about ice surface only, that's a decision of council. I can't speak for that right now. I don't think anybody there will speak on it right now. But, uh, that, when that time comes, uh, everybody will have a chance to, uh, voice their opinion on what that might look like, but right now we can't say. Who was next? Go ahead.
I, I think this was maybe asked, uh, a little bit earlier going to speakers and, and, um, I know a lot of us in the community have been talking, especially those of us with some construction experience, have been having discussions about what are the options and recognizing that, I think the worst case scenario that could happen, and we've heard it, is that our existing floor fix is fine for the end of this season. We start up the plant next season and we get to, oh my goodness, the end of November and it fails. That kills minor hockey for the year, that kills our junior team for the year. And, uh, then we're left scrambling, right? Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
And I think the suggestion that was maybe brought up earlier, and I just wanna ask the question if it's being seriously explored, is could there be discussions with the Iron Minotaur's Bozeman about the Minotaur's Arena to do any necessary upgrades or retrofitting or at least get some costing on it as to what it would take to make that either A, the backup facility or, or B, the temporary facility that could be used for one, two, even three or four or five seasons to house the team, to house minor hockey, to do what needs to be done so that a valley wide facility could be planned, fundraised for, considered? Because I think the cost of doing something like that, destroying again twenty years in the industry, would be significantly less than this type of repair and a lot less risky.
Yeah, we, we can't speak for Minotaur's Bozeman council and, and what they feel. We, we can present a lot of options to them if, if it came down to that, but we can't speak for them as far as what they wanna do to their facilities and, and upkeep. We can bring those forward and I think that maybe, uh, in some previous meetings, we have brought it up. Uh, but it's, if, you, you bring up some very good points, but we can't speak on, on behalf of them.
And I, I don't expect you to speak on behalf of them. I think more what I was maybe heading to is some proactive, proactive discussion between this council and that council, even having maybe a willingness to say, hey, we would be willing to put some dollar values towards a portion or even all of this, knowing that it would be cheaper for the town to put, say, a million dollars towards renovation on that, to buy five years to be able to plan something that actually suits the needs of the valley.
Okay, so I've got a few hands up, so I'm gonna go with Mr. Poole and Counselor Boychuk, Counselor White, then back to Maggie.
We have, we have contacted, like, with the, the Swan Valley Stampede years, the, the possibility of going to Minotaur's and, uh, I don't have anything written on here, so it can't be quoted, but what we've been told is, is, uh, for a practice facility, that's what we've been shooting for. We would still have to put money into it. The town has discussed the idea, it hasn't been decided or anything, but have discussed with the board in Minotaur's to, to have our employees work there and assist them. And, and we have brought nothing to this council in terms of how much that would cost or what that would look like, because the, the games were apparently a no from the NH, or NHL. But it possibly could be used as a practice facility and what we hear from that board is it could not start in September. They're gonna have to start in November, leaving the stampede years without a practice facility, which cannot happen.
Counselor Boychuk.
Yeah, that's what I was just wanting, um, CEO to speak to was that those things have been looked into as far as, like, the change rooms don't meet their standards. We had, we looked into bringing in Abco trailers to do that, like, we've thrown everything at it to try and make that work in the interim and unfortunately, nothing, we seem to dance around, made them wanna accept that. The other question I have, just to be clear on two. So this is a resolution for borrowing the seven point five for the arena, whether, pardon?
Two point seven.
Oh, sorry, two point seven, yeah. Yes, for the arena. But it's not saying that it's a hundred percent for a retro or to a new build. Like, if, for instance, our.
It's for a retro.
It's for a retro.
It is for the retro, but it's not.
For Canada.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Counselor White.
Uh, Chris, Mr. Stamm, I guess, what did you mean by an upgrade to the Minotaur's Arena? Because I believe, I repeat what, uh, Counselor just said. We're led to believe the ice is too small, cause I got a little grumpy over that. I said, why can't we just go out there? But I guess the, the hockey gods say, no, you can't play out there, ice is too small, this is not right. And I'm thinking cheaper, so we played hockey, that would be just a wonderful place, it's warm.
I, I think, and I, and again, I'm, I'm gonna be careful to say for sure because there's a lot of things floating around out there about all this and we need to go to the source to find out. But what I have heard is that the change rooms are side by side, which is an issue. That's easily corrected with a small dollar renovation. Uh, the plant may be undersized, I'm not sure what, what that would take if you look at the plant that's running earlier, but I think there's possibly for this season contingencies the team could consider. Um, although not ideal ones, uh, there might be options. But those are the things I'm aware of, that, that I've been hearing that are problematic, that could be corrected with, again, you know, three quarters of a million, two million dollar renovation would do a lot of work to that facility and buy everybody in this valley under five.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I spoke to somebody on the arena board for Minotaur's and he said, um, he, he doesn't know or didn't mention the part about the ice surface not being big enough. But he did say they would be prepared to, of course they need change rooms, they need, uh, improvements, but he did not slam the door shut on that idea. And I, I'm hearing a little bit from some council members that, oh, that we've dealt with that. I think that needs to be opened up and a serious discussion made. And maybe you can't have home games here. I don't know, I know nothing about how this hockey is run, but maybe you can have a practice rink in Minotaur's and, and your other games be elsewhere. I don't know, but I think we need to get creative with how we can get by this kind of like a bottleneck and that gives you time to maybe put up a new rink or whatever.
Okay. Uh, Deputy Mayor Morio.
Um, yeah, sorry, I didn't get your name in the back of the room there, but, uh, when you had mentioned that, like, a system failure, um, from what I understand, like, it's highly likely we'll have a, a system failure. The issue is the shifting of the ice, like the concrete surface that's, um, creating an ice issue, like with the cracking. So like, the system is functioning as it's designed to cool and all that stuff, but from what I'm understanding, it's, now that we have some insulation there and now potentially it's the ice or the frost that's in the ground that's now hopefully receding, that's potentially causing the ice shifting. So the system is working as intended, but one of the drawbacks is now that we got movement underneath that's creating a bonding of the ice surface to the sand or whatever, where you can have the shrinkage, um, with that. And that's creating those cracks that are, uh, exposing potential liability issues for injury and all that stuff, so. But, uh, that, that, that's the main concern.
Can we not manage, manage those cracks carefully? The bias time?
I'm not a nice expert, so.
Well, nobody knows. Nobody knows if, if, the, what you guys have laid down in the last five years and other years, six, seven, nobody really knows, but.
So, like, I know that the, the, the crews at the arena are managing the crack right now, but if it's all of a sudden during a game or, uh, like, as example says, in the middle of the second period, all of a sudden there's a pop and someone has to come out and say this is done, then it, it's a, an immediate red light, so maybe Director.
Director of Recreation.
Yeah, we are doing what we can to mitigate the crack where we have a little auger, I guess, chisel made that we chisel up the crack periodically and slush it back in. Uh, we're just trying to manage it that way, but we are keeping an eye on it and doing what we can. We're not, not just throwing up our hands or anything. We're trying the best we can to, uh, to mitigate that. And we got the, the all professional John Ricks there overseeing it. So we got a ton of expertise in the building as well. Um, so yeah, we're doing all we can on our end. And then the temperature, the temperature, um, point is valid as well. We're trying to keep it, you know, as warm as possible with the fluctuating temperatures just to make sure that the shrinkage isn't an issue. Um, but other than that, we're just, we're keeping an eye on it.
What's the biggest size of crack you guys had to deal with this far? Like width?
Uh, they're asking how big of a crack.
Uh, the width?
The width?
Like, the current crack goes from the north end to the south end. Uh, what's that?
The width, yeah.
The width?
Yeah, the, the width of the crack right now, the total crack, yeah, is about an inch and a quarter. Um, it hasn't opened yet, which is really good. We're just trying to shave out the, the brittle ice in there and fill it with, with slush ice, um, as, as, as best we can. So we shave it wider than the crack is and we try to fill it in again.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on the, uh, on the bylaw itself?
Last one.
Okay.
If you spend seven to ten million dollars on this arena and it's fifty-five years, approximately fifty-five years old now, how many more years do you predict to get out of it?
Do they give us that number on that?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're estimating approximately fifteen.
Fifteen? Holy fitness, that's a lot of money.
Fifteen to twenty.
There's many sheds in the rural areas that were constructed similar, but, uh, because of their age and snow, they collapsed. So that's always a concern of mine, especially spending that money.
Okay, so we've all taken your notes or your, uh, points, uh, you know, uh, down and council will, uh, consider all that, I'm sure of it. A lot of information, I think that we've covered it off pretty much, uh, this evening. And I do, uh, thank you all for coming out and, uh, voicing your concerns. And, but I think that we can proceed with the rest of the evening, um, since we've pretty much heard all of, everything and, and we've kinda circled around a couple times. So again, I, I do thank you all for coming out this evening and on behalf of council, I do thank you. So with that, I am gonna close the public hearings. So, uh, resolved at the public hearing for local improvement plan one, two thousand twenty-three at eight fifty-nine PM, moved by Counselor Bobic, seconded by Deputy Mayor Morio. Discussion, all in favor? It's carried, the hearing is now closed. Three point three, resolved at bylaw one, two thousand twenty-three, being a bylaw of the Townes Swan River to provide for the expenditure and borrowing of funds for the Swan River Centennial Arena retrofit as a local improvement that read a first time. Moved by Counselor Bobic, seconded by. Moved by Counselor Bobic, seconded by Counselor Medwood. Discussion, Deputy Mayor Morio and then Counselor Bobic.
Um, yeah, so as everybody knows and as council knows, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. Um, just by, if this resolution does pass tonight, um, it by no means indicates um, for myself, um. That this project will be green lighted by myself or uh, what other option, there's a lot of other options that's out there, that's being currently worked on, that may. Change the whole scope of the practice or take it in a whole new direction. Um, but uh, as was mentioned during the public hearing, um, the big unknown with the timeframe with the municipal board is the reason why we need to get the first reading passed to send it to them. Because their timeframe is one hundred percent out of our control, um, and then. The construction season for, for this is rapidly approaching, so um, we have to get at least some portion of it started. Uh, but um, the breaks can definitely be uh, put on or redirected at any point, so. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bobic.
Uh, just to echo Deputy Mayor Morio there, at, at any one time, this borrowing by law doesn't mean this is gonna go ahead. This is a total decision that'll come up and probably be, the biggest thing will be when those tenders come in. And at, at any one time, it doesn't have to be a roof, it doesn't have to be the walls, the floor is the most important part, maybe that's something council will look at and if that's. Ninety percent of the price of the thing, maybe that's something we have to look at again. But without proceeding with this and something happens to that rink right now and we don't have borrowing by law, everything will shut down again. I think council's moving forward with, in mind to keep this rink open at this time, at what cost it may be.
Okay, thank you, further discussion? Okay, I'll ask, oh, go ahead, Counselor Mor, um, Medwood.
I, I will be abstaining, so at what point do I?
You don't have to say anything if you're abstaining.
But when do I speak to the reason for my abstaining?
When I call the, the question.
Okay.
Okay? So all in favor? Okay, abstention?
I have the same questions and concerns as most of our audience has shared. I do support having an arena, but I don't feel the right research and effort has been put into it to make sure that this is the best way to go about it. Since I've come to the table, we have not, to my knowledge, actively engaged our municipal neighbors to see where they might feel as to whether coming on board for this project. Or as, I have the same question about, is there a retro or a renovation we can do to Minotaurus that will buy us time to get the right new build done in the community? We don't have those answers. So a lot of the questions the audience made are the same questions and concerns I have, so I don't feel I have enough information to make an informed decision.
Okay, that's good. So the, the resolution has been passed, so with that. Results, the special meeting of council now be adjourned at nine oh three P M. Moved by Counselor Medwood, seconded by Counselor Bobic, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I will say if anybody is interested in uh, getting.